You can start it.
Okay. Here we go. All right, good evening, everybody. This is the City Council Workshop for City Bonny Lake, September 5th, 2023. Well, there was very wishful thinking that we may have a quorum, but right now, we do not have a quorum, so we need to recess right now and for about five minutes until our other council members get here.
Okay.
You know, I was like counting.
And then I can't, I can't see the thing.
Okay, we are reconvening the City Council Workshop of the City of Bonny Lake for September 5th, 2023. As always, we'll start by saluting the flag. Everybody can stand, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
Mayor McCullough.
I'm here.
Deputy Mayor Carter.
Here.
Councilmember Baldwin.
Here.
Councilmember Evans.
Here.
Councilmember Fullerton.
Here.
Councilmember McLehman.
Present.
Councilmember Swatman.
Present.
And Councilmember Watson.
Do we have a motion for Councilmember Watson? Shall I move? Yes. All in, all in favor of excusing Watson from tonight's workshops, say aye.
Aye.
On any opposed. All right, looks like Councilmember Watson is excused. I'll ask about that later. All right, we do have a clock, a proclamation, but however, we also have an agenda modification that we are going to add as discussion item G. And that'll be, and Ms. Ryerson, she is present via video. Okay. So let's move on to the proclamation, which is one of my favorites. There's a proclamation, whereas since 2004, the annual event known as Beautify Bonny Lake has been, has produced thousands of volunteer hours for the improvement of the community with community volunteers and businesses generously contributing time, materials, and money toward needed improvement projects. And whereas Beautify Bonny Lake strives to inspire increasingly greater numbers of citizens and businesses to donate at least three hours each year to enhance the beauty of the city and providing a means to easily capture the goodwill of the citizens via their willingness to create a permanent and positive improvements to the city. And whereas the City of Bonny Lake wishes to recognize the efforts of Beautify Bonny Lake on this 19th annual event. And whereas Beautify Bonny Lake is a registered charitable 501(c)(3) organization, organized to engage the community in positive and charitable activities and to enhance the livability of the city. Now, therefore, I, Michael McCullough, Mayor of the City of Bonny Lake, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2023 as Beautify Bonny Lake Month. And right now, we do have some in attendance, and we want to applause the Beautify Bonny Lake for their creativity. In continuing this event, urge all citizens, property owners, and businesses to participate in Beautify Bonny Lake and support this great community effort by donating time, effort, talents, materials, monetary contributions to the local improvement project associated with wonderful events. This, this wonderful event, and my mind was on the fact, do you have any clues where our statue went?
Getting 26 different sites, though, on.
Councilmember.
I just want to say thank you for coming. I know I've been a part of BBL for the last eight or nine years now. And, and on average, we get anywhere between 550 and 700 volunteers over the last eight, eight or nine years. I've been a part of that. Just underestimating at 400 volunteers, thinking about the earlier days over the last 20 years, over 24,000 volunteer hours dedicated to the city and making sure that it's clean and beautiful. And, and I couldn't even tell you how many tons of bark that probably was. But it's been near and dear to my heart. I know if Councilmember Watson was here, he'd say this thing. I know Councilmember Swatman's been a part of it probably since the inception. I know Councilmember or Deputy Mayor Carter's been a part of it. I think everyone here has been, been to it at some point over the last few years. It's really cool to see what Buckley and Ian Pla are doing as well as a result of this. You know, it, it started off slow, but it's becoming a movement. And I know it's, it's, you know, something that all the high school kids look forward to. I know that the number of hours dedicated by not only those sitting there, but everyone else that attends all these weekly and biweekly meetings and, and everything. This kicks off in February, so it's not like we all come together and September 1st and start planning it. There's hundreds and hundreds of volunteer hours that everyone sitting over there has put into this each and every year. So thank you for all of that. It's, it's truly appreciated for what you guys do every year just out of the kindness of your heart for the community you live in. So thank you.
Indeed. All right, now, we do have a presentation with discussion from our city prosecutor and deputy city attorney, Ms. Burke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council Members. Tonight, I'm going to be discussing the opioid settlement funds. And my name's Dina Burke, and I'm the deputy city attorney prosecutor. So just a little bit of background. The current opioid crisis ranks as one of the most devastating public health catastrophes of our time. It started in the mid 1990s when the powerful drug OxyContin was promoted by Purdue Pharma and approved by the Food and Drug Administration. There were three waves of deaths associated with opioid epidemic. The first wave was deaths associated to the legal use of prescription opioids. Then there was a second wave of deaths associated with heroin that was already addicted people were attracted to it. And then most recently, there's been a third wave of deaths that's arisen from illegal synthetic opioids like fentanyl, which I'm sure all of you have heard about fentanyl deaths in the news. In addition to the crushing public health burden of preventable deaths, millions have been affected by related problems such as homelessness, joblessness, truancy, and family disruption. As a result of this, there have been multiple lawsuits going on, two of which involving two different groups of pharmaceutical companies have been settled by basically armies of attorneys and the Washington State Attorney's General's office. So we have two settlements. There is a memorandum of understanding, which Bonny Lake did agree to last year that establishes the framework for how those funds will be distributed. Bonny Lake is receiving 0.119% of the settlement after the attorney's fees and other costs are deducted. And there's also a Pierce County Opioid Abatement Council that's being stood up, and that's going to monitor us and ensure that any funds that we spend are in compliance with the two settlement agreements. The allocation of the settlement funds, largely in the end, it was related to the population of the city. But in terms of how it was distributed, they looked at the amount of opioids that were shipped to the county, the number of opioid deaths that occurred in that county, and then the number of people who suffered opioid use disorder in that county. And the settlement allocation regions are based on the Washington State Accountable Community of Health Regions. We're in the Pierce region. So that is basically all of the Pierce County cities that are receiving funds. The Pierce County Opioid Abatement Council is ensuring compliance with the settlement agreements. It's composed of all the cities that received funds. So that's basically any city that has a population over 10,000. So smaller cities such as Ordin or South Prairie did not receive funds. They're being taken care of by the county, but we did receive funds. Bonny Lake is going to have a primary and alternate representative to the Pierce County Opioid Abatement Council. That's coming forward next Tuesday on the 12th for council to pick a primary and an alternate representative. The alternate would be the representative in the event that the primary is not available. And they're going to review the funds that we use just to make sure we're in compliance. But at the end of the day, you, the council, get to decide how those funds are used. In terms of the payment amounts and timing, we have already begun receiving payments from the first settlement. The second settlement that Bonny Lake agreed to and signed on to, the payments have not yet started. They're still figuring out how much money the lawyers get in terms of the attorney's fees, but once that gets hammered out, we'll know exactly how much we're getting, and we should then begin receiving money from that second settlement as well. It'll be primarily, it'll be very similar to the amounts that we're getting from the first settlement. All right, so we've already received three dispersments from the first settlement. Those are basically 6,000 and change that we've received from each settlement. So we have approximately $19,000 that the city's received, and that's been put aside separately from other funds that the city has so that we know that that's separate and to be used for the opioid settlement funds and abatement purposes. 10% should be set aside for any administrative costs associated with the Pierce County Opioid Abatement Council. You know, I always hope that it'll be less than 10,000. According to the settlement, it cannot be above 10,000, or excuse me, 10%. So it should be at or below 10%. It can't be above 10% of the amount the city has received. Going forward, that's the projected payment schedule. There is a little bit of change that is basically due to how it was negotiated and which each pharmaceutical was paying and when they were paying it. But up until 2038, the city is going to be receiving somewhere between 12,000 and change to 16,000 and change per year. And this is just for the, the first settlement. The second settlement should be a somewhat similar amount. So how the funds can be spent, in your packet, there's Exhibit A that's attached. It's a really long list of how, examples and how the funds can be spent. But basically, it's anything associated with abating the opioid epidemic. It can be spent on treatment to support people who are in treatment and recovery, connect those people to services, help them gain access to treatment. It can be spent on prevention, preventing overprescribing, preventing misuse, preventing overdose deaths. It can also be spent on training, education, or research. On the staff level, you know, we're talking to, in the prosecutor's office with the court and the public defender's office, we really see the largest hurdles to sobriety getting, being the cost of an evaluation and treatment and transportation. Because we're in East Pierce County, and most of the treatment agencies are in Tacoma, just the transportation to those agencies to get the evaluation treatment is being the largest hurdles that the people that staff interact with regularly have. The cost of an evaluation is about $100 to $150. The cost of treatment can really vary depending on how severe that person's needs are. It could be anywhere from $2,000 to $8,000, depending on how much treatment they need. So the staff recommendation for how to spend the funds is to develop a program with the current staff in the court prosecutor's office and public defender's office to help the people that are, they call them criminal justice involved persons, but really, it's defendants who need help paying for an evaluation and treatment to help their opioid addiction. And some people have a co-occurring mental health and opioid addiction. They may have had a mental health issue and then self-medicated with opioids. And then also helping those people gain access to transportation so they can actually get to the evaluation and get to the treatment to make progress in gaining sobriety. So today, you know, I'm really hoping for, from council, be any questions that you have about the settlement funds and also to have just a general direction or if you have any concerns about how those funds should be spent. This will be coming back to go to the finance committee and council to get a full vote on, but it'd be nice to have, to hear any concerns you have about the path we're considering going down. Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Fullerton has a question.
Oh.
So this Pierce County Abatement Council, are they elected, appointed, and are they doctors?
So each city gets to appoint one primary and alternate. It can be either a staff member or an elected member. So it could, for example, from Bonny Lake, it could be a member of staff, or it could be a council member who's appointed. But given my knowledge of the average city employee, I don't think it's probably an M.D. doctor. And the, the, the opioid abatement council, they're, basically their purpose is to just ensure that the funds are spent in compliance with that Exhibit A.
Yeah.
Hey, Councilmember Baldwin, then Deputy Mayor Burke.
Oh, hey, thanks for, yeah, okay. Question. So how much on average do you feel like treatment is for just a single individual?
So it's probably about the like $100 to $200 for an evaluation. And then it's going to depend on their needs. I talked to the public defender about it earlier, and he said it, it really comes down to what their needs are and the progress they make in treatment. So for one person, I think it could be that $2,000 to $8,000 range.
Okay, okay, yeah, because I, I guess the reason why I ask is because if, let's say that, let's say it's, you know, even in the middle, you know, somewhere in the middle. Just looking kind of at the scale of how things were rolling out, you know, it looks like it's about 12,000 a year, maybe, you know, give or take or whatever. So essentially, this would potentially, if we were to just even use it to treat two people, to put them through treatment, it, it could essentially only do maybe two people in a year.
Unfortunately, the, you know, we are receiving the funds, but on the grand scale of a city budget, it's, it doesn't move the needle that much. I, I, you know, there is the like, hey, if we can get one or two people sober on the street narrow and not out there committing crimes, that could be really helpful for the community.
And if I could follow up on that before, too. I should, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you.
The, what I was curious about that Councilmember Baldwin brought up is, do we have any stats on our recidivism rate on people who have violated their probation and have been revoked as a result of not finishing their treatment because they couldn't afford it?
Well, I mean, that's what most people claim, you know, as an access issue. I mean, the, you know, the veracity of that, it's hard for me to tell as a prosecutor, but that's the number one issue that our, our public defender has said is out there for people. I mean, I understand they still have to be self-motivated, and that could be something that, you know, council wants, we could have some discretion about, you know, determining the likelihood of a person having success in that treatment in terms of how.
How many chances does our judge give a particular defendant before she will actually revoke if they come back?
I think it's, I mean.
Because that costs money.
To bring them back into court.
Yeah, yeah. Every hearing costs money.
It does. I mean, I'm hoping that if, you know, we have this program where they, I mean, this really, everybody has an, you know, excuse for why they didn't do treatment and why they didn't get the evaluation, you know, the dog ate my homework. I mean, there's a million different excuses. It is a few times usually before a person's, you know, finally no more chances they're just going to do jail and close. And that means basically, they don't get a chance at treatment anymore. It's just they're going to go to jail for a really long time, and that's kind of the court is done with them. So, yeah, I mean, it can take six plus months, and a lot of times, you have people in the meantime who are failing to appear. They just don't even show up for their, their court hearing.
Hey, I'm sorry, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I am for using this to take away that excuse, essentially. I think it's great, especially for, and I don't know if we can use it for the therapeutic court or whatever we're calling it now, I can't remember. But specifically for those people who are actively participating in something to help them get where they need to go, because it seems like they already have maybe some skin in the game. And then we're just helping them overcome a, an actual problem or issue. I'm all for helping them do that. I think it's an important piece that we implement, especially if we have the funds to do that then. Is that something, I guess, is this enough or too much money to help with specifically the therapeutic court people that are involved?
So my understanding right now is that the therapeutics, the community court funds can be spent on community court members. We've had some people who have been in jail, and, you know, they have a bed date for like impatient, impatient treatment. And the finances become an issue, and just the transportation, even from the jail to impatient treatment is a hurdle. A lot of times, if they're already in jail on a pre-trial basis, there's a lot more going on with their criminal history where, for whatever reason, community court isn't really a path for them anymore. But there is still that hope that they can become sober.
I would think that the prosecutor and the judge are probably in a good position to, on a case-by-case basis, to make that determination as to, you know, hey, this could help with them with this particular issue. So I would, I would be for putting it in your hands on a case-by-case issue for, for them to have that consideration.
And Councilmember Baldwin.
Yeah, it does sound like there are kind of some different scenarios where, you know, it wouldn't necessarily be two people that need treatment or something like that. I guess my question then is, how many people in Bonny Lake do you feel like a year need some sort of, you know, inpatient treatment?
I would say that most defendants have some sort of drug addiction and/or mental health issue. So, you know, there, it's, it's few and far between. I mean, there are some cases that we have that are just, you know, something happened. You know, maybe like a young person who did something stupid. But I think, you know, most defendants have some sort of drug addiction issue.
So we don't touch the old people who do things stupid? They haven't caught me yet. Councilmember Swatman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I was thinking about what Mr. Carter, Deputy Mayor, was talking about. Or in a not fully understanding, are you talking about possibly standing up a new program? Or because I was thinking it's great, but Deputy Mayor was talking about to, you know, help fund some of the options that we have, but we're not talking about a new program?
It would basically be a program where the, we would make the funds available where the court prosecutor's office and public defender could identify defendants who are not, not necessarily in community court to use the funds on, to pay for the evaluation and treatment. So it would basically be setting up the funds, and if a person is identified as needing treatment, the funds from this pot of money would be used to pay for the evaluation, pay for the treatment, and potentially pay for their transportation.
So, not really my area, clearly. But I'm seeing that, it sounds like there's more of a demand, and the funding would be there, right? So that's what I'm kind of hearing.
I mean, it's definitely, I mean, it's definitely possible that there could be more of a demand. We do see some people.
You know, I want to know what you do in August when it's like, you know, Mary Sue and Bob need treatment in September, and I'm sorry, but our program is out of money.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's definitely a possibility. We could set up a screening criteria where we're only committing funds if we know we have enough funds to get that person through the end of their treatment.
Councilmember.
This may sound a little cold-hearted here, but Item A, Number 7, Support Detoxification and Withdrawal Management, would jail do that?
While the person's in jail, yes. But unfortunately, the likelihood of overdose and death is really high, most high when a person gets out of jail. So unless that light bulb goes on while the person's in jail that they truly want that sober lifestyle, yes, while they're in jail, they're most likely going to be sober, but it doesn't necessarily mean when they get out of jail. And at the misdemeanor level, we can't really hold people longer than 364 days. And especially if they have good time, they get out before then.
Are we responsible for their sobriety after jail?
These are funds that can be used to get people sober. And if a person continues to be addicted to drugs, they are more likely to commit crimes, so.
I just know our jail budget is rapidly underfunded right now. And if we were able to put even $12,000 a year into it for Item Number 7 to, to support that. I, I get wanting to help people as well, but I mean, people are only going to want to be helped as much as they want to be helped. And $12,000 minus the 10% racketeering charge, I mean, I'm sorry, abatement fee, which I might want to look into a RICO case for Pierce County on that as well.
Well, I mean, I can say simply from my day job experience that simply jailing them and then letting them loose is what led to recidivism in crime. They get out.
Pharmaceutical companies is what led to it.
But we're talking about people who are addicted, who go out and steal things, you know, home invasions, go out there and steal things to fund their drug habit. And lots of, that's why we, they developed a, I, I mean, it's the whole reason why we had these therapeutic courts, is to try to abate that particular cycle. So that's, I mean, the statistics don't lie on that. It, it certainly has abated it since they have started these programs in King County, Pierce County, and now the resulting municipalities. So.
King County is the, the model child for drug abatement.
Yeah.
Follow their lead.
No, well, it's not drug abatement, it's crime abatement, which has been happening as a result of this. The direct causation of these courts have led to lessening of these sorts of crimes. So it, so anyway, that's just to keep our subject where it's supposed to be. It's not just helping these people who have addictions. We're doing it because these people commit crimes and as a result of their addictions. And that's what the whole point is. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is there a time limit, like that this has to be spent by a specific date?
Pretty sure it's five years after the last payment. So I'm going to be retired by then. I think.
2043?
Plus five, so.
So it could essentially roll over.
Yeah, you can roll it over, you can keep rolling it over. Like, we already have the first three dispersments. So, I mean, you'd have to spend it by 2043. So.
Move that we bring it back in 2040.
I think everyone in this room will be retired by then, but.
Now, from what you were saying in the initial presentation, the second dispersment of this, or are we, yeah, are we looking at getting twice as many funds? From what we see here?
Right, so once we start receiving that second settlement, it should be a similar amount to this first settlement amount.
Okay, during the same years, but it's not going to go from 2039 on for the next 15, 15 years.
So, yeah, so it would be.
14,000, which will be an hourly rate by the time this thing stops.
I was doing the calculation. Yeah, 120,000 in 2038 is probably not going to be enough to buy a new tractor.
January jail costs.
Exactly.
So, so I think we're right. I think there would be a run on this money, basically, and we'd run out if, if we do all of these different things. But I'm all for using it maybe to just deal with the transportation issue, right? Can, and, and we remove that as an excuse for those people that are, that are using it. And then we kind of see where we're at after a couple of years. If we have a lot of money sitting there and we can do a couple other things with it, I think that would be prudent. But at this point, I think kind of rolling it out on a slow play, essentially, might be the way to go.
And that's a valid point, Deputy Mayor, given what our prosecutor said about East Pierce County and our lack of transportation. That's one of the biggest hurdles, is them actually just getting there. And so.
Could that be like bus money or?
Bus, bus money or shuttle. Yeah, something along those lines. All right, any further discussion before we move on? Okay. And I've already lost my.
Did you get what you needed?
Yeah, so the, the general direction is the transportation. Yeah, thank you very much.
Very good. All right, we're going to start with council open discussion. Do we have any open discussion, Deputy, Deputy Mayor? Councilmember Evans.
Thank you. Last Thursday, August 31st, I was fortunate enough to go with interim chief Boyle to the graduation of Officer Ramundo at the Criminal Justice Training Center, HHTC. The second one I've been to, great opportunity. If we have anyone else coming through, I would highly encourage any and all of the council members to go and, and support our police officers that are there and, and see all the other graduates and, and just what their videos look like and everything else that they do during that training. It's pretty remarkable to spend 19 weeks away from their family and, and be able to do all that and come back and, and protect and serve our, our community. So I had that opportunity. And then the other thing I wanted to talk about, and I sent this to an email. I know you're just getting back. But our jail budget has been rapidly expanding beyond what our, our budget is. Our, our jail costs are going beyond what our budget is. I'd sent out an email asking if we could push back on Pierce County at all. I don't know if that's an option. But if we were able to look back on like the last five years of. But if we were able to look back on like the last five years of felony prosecution that they did for us, that they are no longer doing for us as a result of the new gross misdemeanor laws that we put in place. I think we may be able to identify, you know, these particular Bonnie Lake municipal code, court cases that ended up in jail time that did not exist prior to the new state law and see if, because Pierce County is taking our people's money and they're not prosecuting all of it that they should. And I think we should be getting a portion of that back. Otherwise, there, there are jails that they're not allowing us to bring our, our people to, our, our bad guys to are sitting nearly empty and they're sitting on all the excess money. So I highly encourage a conversation with.
Absolutely.
Them on that.
No, no, I'm, I'm with you on that and I might be putting you on the spot, chief. But the agreement that we came up with last year, where it basically halved the jail costs and, and I'm trying to think, it wasn't Yakima, who did, who do we have the jails? Sunnyside, that's, that's right. I knew it was in the area over there. Would you happen to have any numbers on, on, I mean, who we send there versus who we keep in Pierce County? Or who we send over to SCORE and? Okay. And, and SCORE being a private jail that, that employs all the cities and charges about twice as much as all the counties do, so. Okay, oh, Deputy Mayor Carter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to bring this back up because I do it all the time, right? Is eventually we need to build our own jail and house our own people because this is going to continue to be a problem. It's only going to get more and more expensive over time. So just something to think about. I'll continue talking to Sherry about how we can potentially do that in the future. But I think, I think slowly over time, we're seeing this and that this is going to continue to happen. And if we don't do something, then eventually we're just going to get priced out. And then people will just get their citations and a court date and then nothing essentially will happen. So eventually we have to do something, yeah.
And Buckley, how's the Buck, what, what are the limitations on the Buckley jail? Or is it closed or?
Yeah, Buckley is no longer.
Yeah. Yeah, okay. All right, Councilmember Fullerton.
Yeah, so I'm scratching my head over a missing statue myself.
Sorry, Ed.
Looking at RCW9A dot 48 dot 070, malicious mischief in the first degree is actually a Class B felony. Is there any way that we could get satellite imagery? Since we don't have cameras on that statue, can we put up a reward for any information leading to the arrest of the people who destroyed city property? I don't think this is very funny. And I think we could maybe set up a memorial for people who want to go put some flowers down there too. I don't know, but I mean, people are really upset. I've been getting phone calls all week over this. And this, this is destruction of a memorial or, you know, a statue, something that our city put their heart and soul into. And it's a felony. And we need to find out who did it and we need to put these people in prison. They need to go to jail.
Not only is it malicious, it's a theft. And the value of the, the value of the statue would probably put it in the Class A range as opposed to.
Absolutely.
Class B. However, Mr. Wells, who happens to be present, came, posed some very interesting questions today in an email. If you could, if you wouldn't mind expounding on that, on, on some of the stuff that we can do in lieu of getting the statue back.
So I have had a number of the arts commissioners contact me with the statue being stolen and they would like to discuss it at the next commission meeting. One of the, there's basically three kinds of ways we can go right now. And one would be to, one of the commissioners is friends with the artist's wife. See if they have a replica that is not the same size, but a smaller version. Because then we can take that smaller version to the foundry and have them enlarge it proportionally. Haven't looked at what cost would be, haven't looked to see if that was available. That would be one option to look into to see if we want to replace it with an identical statue. Option number two would be to have the arts commission put out a call for a new piece of art to go on top of that pedestal. One concept that is floating around would be to have some plateau pride and support the high school with a panther of some sort. Welcome to Bonnie Lake, home of the Panthers. You know, when you go through University Place, they have welcome to University Place, home of the Vikings, or is it home of the Curtis Vikings? Just Vikings. So that would be one option. Or we also just sit and wait for a little while to see if we can come up with anything else. Those are kind of the plans that the arts commission, should this council want us to look into, go for in direction.
And currently we don't have any leads per the chief and Mr. Vodapich up there. And we, and with the satellite imagery, we don't have any cameras or anything like that that caught anything, right? Well, if the thief was high, we can take some of the money from the opioid and buy a camera to put there so that nobody, so we can catch the thief or whoever it would be. All right, Councilmember McLeymans and then Councilmember Evans.
Yes, did our insurance help us at all with replacing this?
It is part of our insurance, so it's, it's artwork out in the open. It's basically property out in the open. So we do have it covered. In fact, one of our WCA representatives reached out today, seeing the King Five news piece and asked us if we wanted to file a claim. City has not filed a claim yet because we're waiting for the police to complete their investigation. We're certainly hopeful that we'll be able to get the statue back. But it is, it is wrapped up into the total cost of the asset park. So that's the signage, the, the, you know, the, the brickwork. I don't, because I think it was 20 or 30 years ago when we received that statue, we don't have a direct cost because it was given to the city. So it's going to be a little difficult to figure out what the actual price of that one-of-a-kind piece of art is that WCA will reimburse us for. But it is, it is insured.
All right, Councilmember Evans.
That was my question.
Okay, Councilmember Fullerton.
The newspaper article in the Columbian, which was in, not Pierce County, by the way, that's actually Art County, they're down by Vancouver. The, the piece was given a $47,000 price tag that was noted in the newspaper. I would like to know if there is a way to reach out to the widow of Mrs. Anderson. I think that we should, you know, she basically in the article said, you may as well have just stabbed me in the heart because that boy was actually their son who posed for that, that particular piece of artwork. And he posed for hours so that his dad could get the proper dimensions and angles and everything else. So, I mean, this is, this is serious. And I, I believe that there has to be some kind of military or some kind of state imagery that we can access. Can we at least reach out to the Attorney General's office and see if they? Because we know they're spying on all of the citizens. We know they're trying to do 15-minute cities. So there has to be some kind of imagery, some kind of satellite system that could have at least, maybe even get a picture of the license plate. But at the very least, let's put up an award, a reward, because I don't know too many drug addicts that wouldn't sell their soul for a $500 reward. So let's come up with a decent reward for any information leading to the, the arrest of these people who, who did this. I mean, so.
I would just know that I did speak to the widow a week ago Tuesday.
Thank you, I appreciate that, John.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, you're not going to be able to get anything satellite or whatnot. Can't get that for a homicide, so we're not going to be able to get it for her.
Okay.
We can put out a reward. We can reach out to Crime Stoppers. A lot of times they'll, they'll do a reward and we can put one out. A lot of times the patch will do different things, so those are possibilities. My question, chief, is there, there's no leads, correct? There is a lead, okay. That's, that was giving me my question, is this an active investigation or inactive investigation? Because if it's inactive, there's no point in waiting for the police to do anything if they don't have anything. If they have something, okay, fine, there's, there's a reason to wait. So, yeah, I would, I would be for doing a Crime Stoppers reward thing. I think that is, makes sense. I would be for talking to the art commission to see if they're, you know, what are the possibilities of replacement?
But definitely, they have, does, they still have that Washington Most Wanted TV show?
That TV show went away, but David Rose continues to do something on Channel 13. I can't remember the name of it, it's a new program. It's essentially kind of the same thing, but yeah, Washington's Most Wanted went away.
Okay, and that's, that's Fox.
Correct.
Fox get involved or?
They were, they were purchased and that's why it went away.
Okay. Okay, Deputy Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Councilmember Swann.
There's a bunch of them.
Yeah, well, I think we all have.
Everybody around there. Yeah, you know, and I pretty much agree with everyone that it'd be great to have an award, a reward, right? To get these individuals some justice. But the statue itself is undoubtedly gone. I would say it's probably unfortunately, and it's the saddest thing in the world that no longer exists in its current form. I don't recall how tall that statue was, but I think it was well over eight feet. So, you know, it is egregious, these individuals, because they didn't do it out of malice or anything. It's just where we're at in society, but the effect of what they did is immense. It is to me personally, because of course, you know, being around so long that when I originally came up here with the boy standing on the concrete there with the, what was Bonnie Lake and then welcome or whatever it was on the other side? Did we add that concrete at one point? It was backwards, it was Bonnie Lake, you know, welcomes. And then they, you know, did a lot of work there. The art commission did this new banner, the medal up there and everything. So these individuals, obviously, you know, is a bronze statue, right? You know, I've talked to Larry, he's passed now, but I've been to their house. I've watched him do other sculptures over there. It's, she's right, it's, it's, personally, it's egregious. But the individuals that did it are just, you know, as Deputy Mayor probably knows, they're just crazy people, you know? They're like, I can, they're like three male individuals in hoods with masks on that drove a truck over there in the middle of the night with some power tools and hacked a statue off of the thing. It's, it's egregious. And it's, they cut it up on sight, undoubtedly, I bet, because it's so tall. You know, so that's as like, just as like, striking, it's egregious. You know, it's just like a direct attack, didn't mean anything to them at all. They're just going after the copper and, and bronze, whatever it is, mix, right? It's brass and copper or something, whatever mix is. Terrible. Hopefully they'll think of something else to, you know, make it better or different, I guess. Obviously, it's never going to be the same. Of course, you know, Ascent Park, right, beautify Bonnie Lake? That, that was the one we've done over and over and over and over and over. And I got pictures of my phone and the kids, you know, making the stuff all nice out there and pulling weeds and the flag waving in the background and all that kind of stuff. I don't know, it's just egregious. The, the one at the public safety building is hopefully a lot safer. That's a lot smaller, is that a mini version of that? Is that what that is?
About the one from on?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, that kind of a thing, yeah.
We have a mini version, then we can make a bigger one.
So it is, it's amazing, I'm just, I'm so upset. Extremely upset. I'm glad I don't have to drive up there and see that every day.
And Councilmember Ball.
I mean, if they were going for metal, and I agree with you, I think that, that there is a potential that it wasn't just like carefully removed.
No.
Exactly, yeah.
We wish.
And so is there a way that we could maybe contact local scrap yards? I mean, because that's the assumption I would make is if, if they were trying to, you know, get a bronze statue, eight feet tall and, you know, using it to? I mean, that's what they do, they strip the copper and the bronze.
I, I think the police know, or, you know, there, there's rings of these people that do stuff. I don't know if this is one of the, I thought I heard somebody talk about it, you know? They, they've, they've like discovered this, it's like, oh, these bronze plaques and statues are floating around and they're in publicly accessible places and they go get them and they pull them down. They throw them in a container, it goes to some other country where it gets melted down or something? Or in this country somewhere?
A low melting point too, so.
Yeah, it's egregious. Yeah, you can do it in your garage.
Before they took it.
And it's worth some money, unfortunately, a lot more, you know, to them, right?
Well, okay.
Yay, on that happy point, right?
Yeah, do we have any further subjects for open discussion? Councilmember Ball.
Actually, I, I need David Wells because I just wanted to make sure that I was. I wanted to make sure I was saying it correctly. But last week, they had mentioned, our REC folks had mentioned something about a code, a potential code adjustment that would be, you know, practically flawless, I feel like, to allow for people to donate into, what was it, the scholarship fund or what was the? It was, it was something specific, but we don't have a, basically a code in place where REC can collect those kinds of donations. Yeah, so if you can maybe elaborate a little bit more on that.
So many recreation programs throughout the county, state and nationwide have a scholarship fund. And so in order for the city to have a scholarship fund to help those that are disadvantaged to participate in a recreation program, it would have to be a codified action by the council to then allow the recreation program and Ms. Ryerson to set up the proper accounts so that way we can take money in and then be able to give money out based on whatever policy we set. And there's a number of agencies that are around that we could very easily copy and paste and make up our own policy based on the ones that are successfully working around the state.
So, yeah, I'm just, I'm proposing like, what do we need to do to kind of get that all rolling so that the REC department has the ability to do that for our citizens?
Yeah, going through the ordinance process, hopefully.
Does that need to be a policy or an ordinance?
If, if it's codified, it's.
Be great.
So then I guess who do we, what, what happens then?
I would think that David could bring that forward to the finance committee to work through that process.
Does that, does that sound good?
Yeah, I like.
We'd be on board to.
We can work on that.
Okay.
Just let the record reflect that Councilmember Swann is nodding his head vigorously.
Okay, so we'll just, the next step will be to have something brought forward by you? Or that?
Our staff will get working on it and we'll work with Ms. Ryerson to make sure everything is copesthetic before we bring it to finance.
Okay. Okay, yes, there she was, okay, great.
Well, she disappeared before.
Oh, there she is.
All right, well, we do have an executive session tonight, so seeing no, no other open discussion. No, 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 what I'm, what I'm saying is that we need to move forward from open discussion. I wasn't calling for, I said, we do have one later. So anyway, so from the script, let's see, seeing no other open discussion, we now have review of council minutes and Councilmember Watson isn't here. Councilmember Fullerton, you're next on.
I did not have any corrections.
Oh, very good. Okay, so now we're moving on to, looks like item E, which is a discussion action, action item, since it's a discussion action item and it's Resolution 3177, Madam Clerk, could you read it please?
This is Discussion Action Item AB 23126, Resolution 3177. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Bonnie Lake, of Pierce County, Washington, authorizing the mayor to sign an attachment to the agreement with Parametrics Incorporated for the purpose of providing additional on-call inspections. The council motion would be to authorize the mayor to sign an attachment to the agreement with Parametrics Incorporated for the purpose of providing additional on-call inspections.
Go ahead, hear a motion?
I'm going to move.
Okay, now we have that, is there any discussion before we take citizen comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
The CDC did review this this evening, and we do recommend it for passage, just for your information.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Swatman. And, do we have any further discussion before we move to citizen commentary? Okay, Councilmember Baldwin.
Yeah, I remember kind of some discussions before in regards to the city's capacity to be able to just do inspections in a timely manner, and I know that they are definitely in need of making sure that there's an ability to be able to get those inspections done in a timely manner, so that people can move on also with things. So, I'm in support of this, yeah.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, we are now moving on to citizen commentary. Citizens, this is your time to address the council on Resolution 3177 only. The city will now enable the video and microphone for those attending virtually. You will need to turn on your video and microphones on your end if you are wanting to be seen or heard. We will start with those who are here in person first and move to the virtual comments afterwards. You'll have five minutes, and if you wish to speak on it, please approach the dials and state your name and address. And Mr. Decker, this is for Resolution 3177.
Hey.
There we go.
Council Mayor Dan Decker, past council member, live at 12470 East, Bonnie Lake, Washington. And I'm really surprised that we're having citizen comments tonight, but here I am.
Correct. That's, and, Mr. Decker, did you hear me when I said, the commentary that we have is Resolution 3177?
Resolution 3177?
Yes.
Okay, on 3177.
Hey, Janine, I'm live.
Hey, you're live, yes.
Am I on here? Okay.
They put my voice live, it just says you're now live. Said you just got unmuted.
He's muted.
Oh, very good, okay.
Test, test, 135, or is that 253? Area code, that is. Okay, I don't know if this thing's on or not, but start over again from point A. Council Mayor Dan Decker, past council member, live at 12470 East, Bonnie Lake, Washington. And thank you for the opportunity to speak on Resolution 3177. I have just a couple of questions, which I'll make sure, I hope. Anyway, the resolution says that the mayor has to sign a particular document and $12,500. I'm not sure if that's $12,500 a year, a month, or a day. So, I'm not sure what that meant there, I might have just missed the timeframe on that. But anyway, what is on-call civil inspections? That's my question. I read the document, you have it in the packet over here, and so, reading it, I couldn't find anything where it said anything other than on-call civil inspection, which in my mind means absolutely nothing, because it doesn't say what it means. There's no definition to on-call civil inspection that I know of. And I, and the rest of the people in the world, probably don't know either. You guys might, but we don't, and I would like to have the answer to that. Thank you very much, Council.
Okay, yes, and Mr. Johnstone, if you could comment on that.
Absolutely, so, backing up here just a little bit, civil inspections are provided normally by our staff civil inspector, Dennis Rogers, he's going to be going on vacation periodically, when that occurs, since we only employ one of those, we'll call in consultant assistants to complete those tasks. He is responsible for providing civil inspection for most of the development-related projects occurring within the city. So, he would be provided, when we talk about civil inspections, he's out there looking at all the different civil-related items that may be being constructed by a developer, including streets, utilities, sidewalks, all of that kind of infrastructure. On-call means that we merely keep a contract with, in this case, with Parametrics, that we're able to seek authorizations to amend in a quick manner when these needs arise. So, in this case, this on-call contract that we have with Parametrics that was previously authorized in April for $8,000 to provide civil inspections at a certain point for a particular project, is just being utilized again and then amended for an additional amount to cover the assistance we need to complete these inspections while our staff inspector is on vacation.
Okay, so my understanding is that you're saying that civil inspector would be dealing with sidewalks, roads, telephone poles, different types of things in the city that, when a person's on vacation, they would be checking to make sure that they were done correctly, and I appreciate that. And the, I think that $12,500, if it's per year, is kind of slight. It doesn't really cover what the cost would be for the individual. From the reading that I, about insurance automobiles, et cetera, et cetera, their cost to the situation. All right, so, I think $12,500 is a pittance, peanuts. Not enough money for what they'll be doing for their time, their cost, and their effort involved. Thank you, Council.
All right, thank you, Mr. Decker. Councilmember Fuller.
So, just for clarification, is this, this is simply a contract with Parametrics in order to have an inspector come in as needed when our inspector is on vacation? So, this is just like a contract with a, so, we're not having to hire another person to do one person's job? We're just using this as a contract that we have with Parametrics in order to cover when somebody's on vacation? So, it's just, it's as needed, the money that would be needed to, available to fulfill a contract or an inspection?
So, that's mostly correct, in this case, this actually is for a specific time period. Our inspector is going on vacation on September 8th. And so, we are hiring them to provide these services September 7th through, I believe it was the 19th or 20th of the month. So, in this case, it actually is for a very specific time, and it'll only be for during that time, and then it's done.
So, we need additional money for that time? So, that extra money is, the $12,800 is for a two-week period of time?
That's correct, the amount that's being sought for authorization tonight via the amendment is for that time period, September 7th through 19th.
Are they going to actually, we're going to actually be spending that money? Or is that going to be like as needed?
No, we're going to be spending this money for a consultant who's providing the service of on-civil inspections here at the City of Bonnie Lake from the period of September 7th to September 19th. That money will be expended to provide that service.
Okay, now we need to move on to our potential video commenters on this. First of all, do we have anybody else for the good of the order who is present? Okay, now we will start the comments that are virtual. If you are virtual and wish to comment, you will have five minutes, please state your name and address for the record. Okay. Well, now the city will disable all video and microphones for those attending virtually. All right, okay, Councilmember Fullerton, do we have any further discussion before we move forward? Okay, seeing no further discussion, it's time to take Resolution 3177 to a vote. All in favor of Resolution 3177, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, looks like it was passed unanimously, and we can move on to a discussion item. Madam Clerk?
I hope you guys can see me, I'm behind the tallest.
Right, yeah.
It's like I'm the pause behind the curtain. So, good evening, Council and Mayor. We, as you know, we've been talking with Mount Rainier Athletic Club about doing a long-term lease for the Reed property. As I was looking at the code one day, I discovered that the subsection F of your procurement policies and disposition of property, which is 27100, does not allow leases of more than five years. So, I put together an ordinance to change that to allow an exception when it's approved by the council. While this was pending, it came up that we may have some surplus property that would be more costly to get rid of than it is to sell, and it might be useful to nonprofits in the Greater Bonnie Lake area. So, since we were already amending Section 2.7100 of the code, we have also suggested a change to allow property worth less than $1,000 to be donated, either to a nonprofit that provides support for the people who are low-income and/or disabled in the Greater Bonnie Lake area, or if the CCO, which is the contracts administrator, determines that the cost of the sale or disposal of the property will exceed the fair market value of the property, it may be donated to any nonprofit organization. Those are exceptions that are allowed under state law. So, we put those into place to give the city other ways to get rid of property other than just throwing it away, if it can't easily be sold, it might do some good in the area.
The question that I have for that Ms. Robertson is, and I believe Councilmember Evans posed it as well, what is the purpose of exceeding the five years, the lease exceeding our five years?
Well, the, and that would always be within the discretion of the council, but it, previously, the code didn't allow more than five years. And if the city gets into an agreement with Mount Rainier Athletic Club for a long-term lease of the Reed property, that would exceed five years. And it would need to, because they're going to be, if this all comes together, they would be putting substantial investments in developing the property, and that would be a much longer-term lease. And we couldn't bring a lease forward with the code as it is without violating the code. So, adding the unless approved by the council gives the council the ultimate discretion to approve a lease that exceeds five years. This also could be applicable to the Bonnie Lake Historical Society.
All right, thank you, that does make sense. Councilmember Swatman, and then Councilmember Baldwin.
Yeah, so, I think, obviously, you know, you need a longer-term lease when you're dealing with some groups when you're leasing property out there. Is there a way to kind of nuance it where it's like an evergreen lease, though? You know, so that you have the ability, because I'm kind of hesitant to give a separate entity, you know, a 20-year lease, and then I'm stuck, right? I don't have any way to reel that back in, you know, if things fall apart on year 10, then I'm just hosed. I'm just like sitting out there with, they're not doing anything with the property, it's like they got the lease for, you know, is there kind of a check-in where you can say, yeah, you know, this is a 20-year lease, and it'll auto-renew every five years unless whatever?
Yes, there's very, there's a lot of different ways to do that, but it all really comes down to the skill of your legal counsel.
Oh, worry, you're very skilled.
It's drafted, I've done a lot of leases. There's a lot of different ways to do leases, you can do ones that have options for extension, that are in the, in the, in the lessees pocket, or you could have it, they have options for extension if they're in full compliance. You can also have really good termination provisions and default provisions. If, for example, they're not doing what they promised to do, the city would be able to give them notice of default, let them cure the default and/or terminate the lease. So, those would all be standard provisions that, if I'm drafting a lease, would be included.
All right, Councilmember Baldwin.
So, as you're explaining, you were saying that you needed to make a change, you found that there was a change that needed to be made in order for the Reed property, for us to be able to, as a council, to make a decision for properties more than five years. But then you said you wanted to add something else to it? And that gave me pause when you said it.
Yes, so, while, I started with the second provision of the ordinance first, because that was what was the thing that got the ordinance drafted, which was to fix the lease length.
Yeah.
While this was pending, I had a question from staff about, hey, we have property that is surplus to the city's needs, can we donate it to a nonprofit? And I looked at your procurement policies on how to dispose of surplus property, and I looked at state law, and the state law allows certain donations, but your procurement policy did not. And so, we were already amending this Section 27100 of the code when this question came up. So, I said, well, look, why don't we add this other provision? Because we're already amending that section of the code for the lease issue. Let's amend it so that if the city wants to donate surplus property that's worth less, worth, worth less than $1,000 to a nonprofit, they can do so under certain conditions. And so, that's what that section of the lease are. Those conditions are, one, it's not a utility property, because there's special rules under state law on utility property. Two, it either is a Greater Bonnie Lake nonprofit that helps low-income or disabled people, because the gift of public funds, the poor and firm, is what is an exception. So, you could give it towards people who are disabled and/or low-income. Or if the value of the property is less than the cost to dispose of it, say we have, to be, not to be funny, but say we have a bronze statue we don't want anymore, and the cost to dispose of it is more than its worth. So, we could donate it to the library or to a nonprofit that wants to put it there. So, those are, those are the exceptions that are in that.
We have Deputy Mayor Carter, Councilmember Evans, and then Councilmember McQuillan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for bringing this forward, I appreciate it. I am good with that, as far as everything has to come back to council anyway, so it's fine. And I appreciate you bringing forward something that gave us an option to get rid of property or give it away essentially to a nonprofit that obviously doesn't violate the law. So, I just wanted to say thank you, and I appreciate that, and I am all for it.
Okay, Councilmember Evans.
The word property kept throwing me, and you haven't been here long enough to see a surplus report come out. But, computer mice, keyboards, monitors, old printers, all of that stuff has to be listed on the surplus. It gets turned over to some government place, and they auction it off, and we might get a nickel for that mouse. And so, if it's, but we have to put a value on that, on that spreadsheet. So, I think if it's less than $1,000, we can donate wheelbarrows that are left over to Beautify Bonnie Lake or something like that, we can't just, there's a ridiculous process, because it's public funds to get rid of an 18-cent, you know, keyboard mouse, important mouse, but, yeah. When I first read that, I'm like, there is not a piece of property in this city that's worth less than $1,000, or $1,000 or less, but it's that old trucks and that kind of stuff.
We're not talking about pieces of land.
No, it's personal property versus real property.
Anything owned by the city is considered.
Desk chairs.
Right, yeah. Cattle.
Old computers that are redundant.
All right, Councilmember McQuillan.
Yeah, so I thought, reading Section C, Item 2, it says, "The CCO may then proceed to direct the disposal of the same by public auction bid or other method on items the CCO deems." So, CCO can't say, go to Goodwill and say, give me a receipt, it's sold?
No, there's limitations on how you can dispose of property.
Okay.
This expands the options. For example, if it's not worth any, not worth much, taking it to the dump would be more expensive than giving it to a nonprofit.
I get, I get that part, I just thought, I just read that paragraph as the CCO's discretion for things less than $1,000, they can say, oh, giving it to a charity is a sale of a value of zero, right?
Not all charities are the same, you couldn't, for example, choose to give something that would be less, that would be... You couldn't, for example, choose to give something that would be less, that would be less than a thousand dollars, but that you could, you could say you could sell it for twenty dollars, but it's worth seven hundred. You can't give that to a chair, even under this, you can't legally give that to a charity that doesn't serve the disabled and/or low-income, because of the gift of public funds issue. But if the cost to dispose of it would be more than the cost, than, than it's worth, say you have twenty wheelbarrows that you can't sell, they'd be, you know, they're worth five hundred dollars and it would be five hundred dollars worth of dump fees, then you can give those to any nonprofit. There'd be no donative intent because the cost to dispose of them would be more than the value of the items themselves. That can go to any nonprofit, but, um, if it's, if the cost to dispose of it is less than the value, it can only go to nonprofits that serve or, or disabled.
Okay. So are we ready to move on to our agenda modified, modified, uh, discussion item, uh, item G? And we, I'll turn that over to Ms. Ryerson.
Yeah, uh, so item G was left off the council packet, so I don't actually have it in front of me, so I'm going off memory now. Um, it's the fee resolution, which will remove it from the code and, uh, create a resolution. Part of this is for transparency, it'll be easier to find on, um, the fee schedule will be on the website clearly listed, instead of having to search through the code, try to figure out where the fees are. Um, this fee schedule does not change any of the current fees that are in the code right now, it just removes them from a code, puts them all in one, you know, uh, easy-to-see place. Um, it will also save us money because we won't have to modify the code and get it codified every time a fee needs to be updated. So it'll save staff time, save money, um, and create better transparency.
Okay, anybody want to discuss us saving money?
And making things easier to.
Councilmember, uh, Swatman?
Okay, Mr. Mayor. Um, so what's the process now to change your fees? Apparently to change the ordinance, right? So in the future, it would be, what would the process?
Uh, so the plan is that this would come back to this resolution yearly. Um, it can come back more than yearly if, if it's needed, if something needs to change, um, and you get, say like the, um, the park rental, you decide that, gosh, that needs.
Changes it to a resolution then, right?
Yep, it's a resolution, so it's still approved by the council, um, it'll still be updated as, probably more frequently as needed, right? Um, but at least a yearly. You'll, you'll likely see this every June-ish, um, seems to be the, the least busy time for us finance folk.
Okay, and we hit on, uh, tonight's workshop so that, well, both the, our prior discussion, uh, that's going to go on, uh, September twelfth, consent agenda, I believe, correct?
Correct. It was, um, at last, it was at the finance committee and Deputy Mayor, um, Carter talked about it at the last meeting, um, on, for the finance committee update. It was intended to go on tonight's meeting, it just got overlooked, and, um, so it came through as an agenda modification. So you'll see it for approval next week.
Okay, well, now we will. Oh, yes, Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, sorry, I just wanted to speak to it briefly. Um, I, obviously Sheri did a good job. Uh, this makes it more transparent, I think it's more efficient, uh, it makes it more sense, uh, for, uh, everyone, but it still comes back through the council, right? So, um, we still have say on if something is going to go up or not and, and whatnot. So I think it makes total sense and, uh, fully supportive.
All right. Okay.
Real, real quick, I don't want to take all the credit for that. Um, John and I had this discussion eight years ago, uh, many cities do this, and it was just something we kept talking about and we finally had the time to do it, and, uh, Ms. Robertson helped us do that as well, so I, I don't get all the credit there.
Well, Ms. Ryerson, I was prepared to give you all of the credit for this, so. All right, well, seeing that we have no items, uh, before our, the council anymore, we will adjourn to our executive session at this point. This is where, um, we will go into the executive session for twenty minutes. It's per RCW four, uh, four-two-dot, uh, three-oh-dot-one-one-zero-G, uh, to discuss the qualifications of an applicant for public employment with no action to follow, and then we will be adjourned.
We're adjourning now. We are adjourned.
We are adjourned.
Yes, we are.